I will call to board our meeting of the Wilsonville City Council, Monday, December 19th at 7:09 PM. And I would like to start by asking the city recorder to call the roll.
Counselor Linville?
Here.
Counselor West?
Here.
Counsel President Acravall?
Here.
Counselor Leehan?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here. Let's please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to ask for a motion on the following order of agenda, but I would like to propose an amendment that under the Communications section of the agenda, we plan for a presentation about, from the Building Department, about demolition permit maps and historic documentation. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended as described?
Your Honor, I move to approve the order of agenda with that amendment.
Your Honor, a second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. It's good that we're all in agreement on that. So, the next section of our agenda is Counselor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements. And this is generally when our counselors report to each other in the community on specific business items related to official meetings they have gone to in representation of the city. And because we have an opportunity to really celebrate our outgoing counselors, Counselor Leehan and Counselor West, this will be a really short segment of the agenda. And so, I will, and it's fine if everybody doesn't have a report, because I will say that our outgoing counselors are going to have a chance to comment a little later, and so will the other counselors. But so, to recap, at this point, I'd like to ask Counsel President Acravall for any business updates for your council report.
Yeah, thank you. I do not have any report to make this evening, so, but we do get an opportunity later to make comment. Okay, excellent, then I'll wait until then. Thank you.
Counselor Leehan?
I have nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Linville, any meeting updates and so forth?
I'll just, I'll be brief. On December the 7th, I went with Mayor Asher from Aurora to a coffee in Salem to meet with legislators, and that was, that was actually a really productive time, and it was an opportunity, I think, for us to talk to those legislators about our legislative agenda. And Congresswoman Salinas was there, so it was even the opportunity to put a little bug in her ear about some of our priorities as well. And I attended on the 14th the C4 Metro Subcommittee meeting, and one of the things that I just want to point out is that there is, on our website, the opportunity for our citizens to take the ODOT survey. And it's related to tolling, and I don't want to be too confusing about what it is. I would just say if you would like an opportunity, one more opportunity, to have input into the impacts of the tolling proposals, just go to the website, click on the link that's there, and the more people we have responding, the more impact, I think, our concerns have. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Linville. I'm glad you brought that up, and the city staff made it super easy. It's the first thing you see when you open the website, so no searching required. So, this is, that, any other comments now, Counselor West?
I have no comments.
Okay, we'll hear from you a little bit later. And so, that brings us to the recognition of outgoing counselors, Ben West and Charlotte Leehan. And it's, I'd like to start out by saying some comments about each of them, and then ask them to, you know, say a few words as they would like. And then, of course, each, you know, for each counselor, I'd like you to have, you all to have a chance to comment as well. And then, just so everybody knows how the flow of this is going to go, because you may have noticed the exciting cupcakes out in the hallway. So, building up to the cupcakes, after our presentations, we're going to have a little plaque commemoration with both Counselor West and Counselor Leehan, and a short video, and then we'll have a reception. So, I'm going to start with Counselor West, and, you know, when, I think, similar to all elected officials, when they come into office, each of us has had our time to be, have that first-time opportunity. Counselor West came in with a lot of new ideas of how he could make an impact and things that he would like to get done. Obviously, had a high interest in the field, and had run for elected office previously to being elected to the council. Now, I was not on the council for your two, first two years on the city council, because I had already left that first four years, and so we started working together two years later, after I filed to run for mayor, and then you filed to run against me the next day.
That's true.
I do remember that. And so, that made things interesting. And after the election, we knew that you'd have another two years on the city council, and I would begin the four years as mayor. And I think we've all had a good opportunity to learn how to hear ideas from each other and work together, and I'm really proud of that opportunity for us, and I hope for other people, because we can all use a lot more civil dialogue and listening to different viewpoints to make decisions. And I think this was a really good, rewarding experience in that regard. So, where there's a will, there's a way, and we had a council retreat process right after we, kind of early in that first, the second half of your term when I joined, I'm just going to kind of reflect on that. And we mutually set two-year council goals, which we have been working on for two years. And I was thinking both about those last two years and also your whole four years, because some of these things started before I was on the council. And the other counselors will probably mention something, but I know that one of the big developments during Counselor West's term was the passage of our equitable strategic housing plan. That was a big thing for Wilsonville, and I don't know that any other cities had done that at that time to that degree, and we're still referring to that. It's a big plan, gives us a lot of guideposts to work on, on some very, you know, housing. We hear about it all the time, and we want to do the best job in Wilsonville, so that has really served us well. We also, during this four years, you were on the council, the council passed the Wilsonville Investment Now Tax Increment Financing Plan, which people can read about on the website to learn more about it. It's also a unique strategy that I don't think any other cities have, and it is credited for helping to attract TWIST Bioscience, which was the largest economic development in the area in 2020 in the region, and it's bringing hundreds of family wage jobs to Wilsonville. So, I appreciate you helping to work on that. And then, another big one was the Frog Pond East and West Master Plan. All of those decisions are helping our city and people across the region, so thank you for that. And so, now I'm thinking about Clackamas County, you going into being the Clackamas County Commissioner. And so, I hope to work you, with you on some key things. So, Counselor West already reached out and said that he'd like to meet in January, which will be great. I, you know, there are some really important things about Wilsonville that we'd like to see supported, clean, green, and safe community. We have really delved into our diversity, equity, and inclusion plans, and we'd like to see the county and city making even greater strides in that regard. And of course, helping with homelessness and some of the solutions that we can have a real part on with the county in that regard. And I think there's a lot of good that we can do with Clackamas County, working together. Two other big things that I will say, that I'd like to work with you on, and that is, one is transportation, that ODOT has identified that it's going to cost at least half a billion dollars to solve the biggest, single most onerous cause of traffic congestion in Wilsonville, and that is the Boone Bridge. And so, we will be looking to you to help us get a new and better bridge. So, that's not asking too much, is it?
Not too much.
And also, protecting our rural reserves and our valuable traded sector agriculture continues to be very important to Wilsonville. And then, I just, we were just looking at the letter that Clackamas County sent Wilsonville a couple of weeks ago regarding the traffic signal at the 65th and Stafford Road interchange. Actually, they were responding to our Frog Pond Master Plan, and responding to those elements of that plan that really interface with Clackamas County. And one of those is the Stafford Road, 65th Avenue interchange. Wilsonville has identified $500,000 toward that. It's going to cost a lot more than that to fund the proposed traffic circle that Clackamas County has in their capital improvement plan. So, we will be really wanting to work on that. So, I think if you can just come through with all of those in the next year, that would be awesome. So, thank you for your service, Ben West, and your ongoing commitment to our quality of life.
Thank you. Well, gosh, the work never ends, does it? My family loves this city. We moved here in 2014. We moved from North Portland, where I grew up, and my husband Paul's here. He grew up in Astoria, and we chose to raise our son here. God, we love it here. I just can't think of anywhere else I'd want to be than in Wilsonville. And it was so unlikely. We joke about it, Paul and I, we're like, well, gosh, we were just, lived in urban Portland, and we had the swanky, cool restaurants around us, and, you know, we could just pop on a bike and get anywhere so easily, and we're never moving to the suburbs. And then, we had, Paul was working with some of our dearest friends, and they would, Vilebois was under development, and they were like, well, come out here for a barbecue, and bring Jay with you, and, oh, wait, let's go look at all the new houses being built. It's so exciting. So, for weekend after weekend, we were being lobbied to move here, so it's their fault, I'm sorry. But they recruited us to come out here, and we felt like we already had a sense of community, an extended family already wanted us, and we started to put our roots down real deep. And we're not going anywhere. The work is just a little different, and we're going to keep advocating for Wilsonville, a more livable, clean, beautiful, excellent city, because that's the kind of city we all want to live in. I've learned so much in four years, so much. Some high points, some mistakes and stumbles along the way, but it's been a thrill the whole time. And I wouldn't trade one of those experiences out for a different one. I've seen this community come together in some of the most tragic, horrific times. And let's be honest, in the last four years, this community and other communities across this country have faced those types of things head-on. I'd be hard-pressed to find a community that did it better than Wilsonville. Just before 2020, in that awful year with the pandemic, the heat wave, the ice storm, what else did we face that year? I mean, I think I'm missing something, but all of the rest, all of it, right? You know, the Armageddon in the distance. We, Vilebois had a fire rage through it and ripped through our community and burned down homes. It looked like a war zone the next day, just charcoal and scariness, and, but, gosh, the community rallied. Businesses in our community came together and helped raise tens of thousands of dollars for victims. People came together and brought goods and things and collected those so people could, that didn't, had lost everything, could have blankets or clothes or underwear or socks or, and all the things that they would need, and toiletries and things like that. We saw people rally around one another in a way that really special communities do, because we take care of each other. That was a really beautiful moment. It was tough, but it was one of those moments where we rose to the occasion. I saw us do that over and over and over again, and I'm really proud to be one of you, and I still am. I'm going on to be a county commissioner, I'm excited. The work has already begun. I start January 1st, but a lot of the priorities of Clackamas County are also the priorities of Wilsonville. And for the county to be healthy and successful, Wilsonville has to be a leader, and those priorities also impact the county in a major way. So, I look forward to continue to serve. I don't think there's a healthy Oregon without an excellent Clackamas County. In so many ways, we are the bellwether of the entire state on how things go. And I look forward to, in the next four years, representing all of you in just another capacity. You know, I have the same cell phone number, I live in the same address, and I can't wait to get to work for you for the next four years.
Thank you. Counselors, any comments? Counsel President Acravall?
Thank you. I can hear your excitement for where you're headed come January, and so I wish you the very best in that new endeavor. I thank you for all of the time that you've given in this role. And I also want to take a moment to thank your family, because it's, it's one thing to sit up here and be a visible person that's contributing in the way that you have contributed, and it's another thing to be at home and supporting in a much less visible way. So, thank you. And yes, again, just best wishes for this next stage.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Counselor Leehan?
Yes, well, I would say we have disagreed on a number of things, but we certainly have voted on the same side of way more things than not. And sometimes, I mean, there's not a person on here that I haven't been on the opposite side of voting on something or other, but on the important things, I think you have always come through. Having been in the county commission position before, and as well as city council, I will have to warn you that city council is way more fun.
I believe you.
Okay, wise words. I'm not sure what to do about that. You'll have to have fun otherwise. So, Counselor Linville?
Well, I was, I was thinking this was going to be a roast, so I had all my-
Go for it.
I had all my comments already, but, it's been great sitting next to you for the last couple of years. Probably a lot of people don't know that you and I get on the phone periodically, and sometimes we actually talk about city business, but it usually ends up being an hour or more on the phone. So, I'm just delighted in the work and the contribution that you've made here. But I also value your friendship and I, and your tenacity to get your masters done all the while. I do have sympathy for Paul and Jay as well, and I think, as he mentioned, it's difficult to run a campaign, it's hard on family. And I hope that your council, your commission, county commission position will not be as hard on your family, but you know I have you on speed dial. And so, I wish you the very best, and thank you for everything that you've done for Wilsonville and for the people that come to you looking for assistance, and you've always been open and available to them. So, my best wishes to you.
Can I say one more quick thing?
Thank you, Counselor Linville.
So, I just want to say one thing is, I can't believe I forgot to do this, but I, and politics and it gets so contentious so quickly and all the time, but you can ask Paul, I value everybody on this council so much. The mayor said jokingly, and not jokingly, we ran against each other in a campaign, but she has been an absolute pleasure and joy to work with and a collaborative partner in so many ways that has been a joy. You've been a joy to work with, you've been a strong leader for the city, and you're a fantastic mayor.
Thank you, really appreciate that.
Kristin Acravall is the epitome of empathy and kindness, and when you need someone to just listen to you, I mean, she's talented at it, right? So, and it's not just she's doing it out of obligation, but she is hearing for your heart, and she leads that same way. Kristin and I have loved serving with you also. Probably ideologically, Counselor Leehan and I have not always seen eye to eye, but she also, I believe, loves this city, has the best interests for this city, and brings much wisdom to our community. And I have often been in awe on how she's navigated tough situations, and have also been, one of the pleasures of my life, to learn from you at times and serve with you, and even find that way to do it in a healthy way of disagreement. I think there's value in that. And then, not last but not least, Joanne is like my aunt on the commission or the council. She's-
I'm glad you said aunt and not grandma.
I, we're both nurses, so there are times where we will just have a conversation from the perspective of a nurse. There are some times we might talk policy, we might talk about our dogs, we might talk about our family, but I trust you and value our relationship going forward also. And though we, life is busy and we don't always get to talk or see each other as much as maybe we'd like, I value your friendship also, so thank you for having the opportunity to serve with you. Brian, thank you so much for your leadership, the way you led staff, the way that you have helped guide the vision of the city and take our vision and move it forward. Amanda, you're new-ish, new city attorney, and I have absolutely loved serving you, your open-door policy, the ability to hash ideas out, to give us good, strong, honest opinions and help guide us legally's been fantastic. And to the whole entire staff, you guys are amazing, talented people, and I've also loved working with you, and thank you for helping make us really good at what we do, so we can't do it without you. So, with that, that's all I have to say, because we've got a lot of things to do, but I wanted to thank everybody.
Thank you, Counselor West. So, now, we'll talk about city councilor Charlotte Leehan, and this is not a roast. So, Counselor Leehan has 30 years of public service experience to the greater Wilsonville community that I know about, there's probably more. So, Charlotte started her time of public service in the 90s, and she helped form a nonprofit organization at that time called Friends of Goal Five. This is an organization that promoted the Oregon statewide planning goal for local governments to adopt programs that protect natural resources and conserve scenic, historic, and open-spaced resources for present and future generations. So, when you're walking around Wilsonville and thinking, gee, this sure does look different than other cities I've been in, that's one of the primary reasons. In 1991, Charlotte was appointed to the city council, and I happen to know that at that time, they had asked her, I think, two or three times, there was no one else available or willing to do it, and she sent them away a couple times and said, well, if you can't find it, this other person will not do it, I will listen to you, and the appointment was made. And so, at that time, then she won election as city councilor in 1992. She then went on to run for the position of mayor and won three consecutive terms over 12 years from 1997 to 2008. And after serving on the city council then for 17 years, she ran for and won the position of Clackamas County Commissioner. And for the last two years of her four-year term on the Clackamas County Commission, she served as chair of the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. So, during this time, Charlotte served on the crucial Core Four Committee, which we call C4, which is the cities of Clackamas County, during the 2008 to 2010 metro, urban, rural review. No, this was a little different than C4.
Yes.
I think I'm conflating those two. It was the Core Four, and it was, it was about the metro, urban, rural reserves land use designation process. And as the county commission chair, she was able to work with Multnomah and Washington Counties and Metro to designate key urban reserves for future city growth. And we continue to talk about those today, and those are things that are in play as we look ahead throughout the whole region. Charlotte worked to protect significant agricultural lands as rural reserves that provide a 50-year timeframe for protection from urbanization, thereby facilitating these local farmers' abilities in this area to make long-term investments to improve their agricultural operations, knowing that they can continue to farm. Their land has continued to be protected as an agricultural enterprise. And so, always seeking to serve her community, Charlotte ran again for city council and was elected to office in 2014 and re-elected to a second term in 2018. And if this was not enough public service, Charlotte serves on some other things, including the Oregon Commission on Historic Cemeteries and the Oregon Heritage Tree Commission. And locally, she's president of the Pleasant View Cemetery Association and volunteers with the Wilsonville Boones Ferry Historical Society. And by the way, you can learn more about some of these things at the Leehan Lectures that are starting on January 3rd. You can see some posters for it out in the lobby. Really, I really encourage you to go to that. Charlotte also served as the council liaison to the City Tourism Promotion Committee that was created in 2015. And for several years, she led Wilsonville History and Geography Presentation for second and third graders in our schools. So, I'm sure that I didn't include all of the ways that she contributed, probably left out a couple dozen, but you get the idea. And during her 30 years of service to the greater Wilsonville community, I'm going to just go into a couple, this is a long period of time, so this is why I have to pull out a couple of major things.
I want the cupcakes to, you know-
She led, she led our efforts to seek a long-term supply of domestic water from the Willamette River, and an executive at the Coca-Cola Bottling Company once said that Wilsonville water was among the best in the U.S. And she also led our efforts, which you can learn more about at the Leehan Lectures, to site the Vilebois Urban Village at the old, the site of the old Dammish State Hospital, and to place the proposed Coffee Creek Correctional Facility in the place it is now in North Wilsonville. And there's a lot behind all of those things, and that, all of that could have gone much differently. We wouldn't have even been able to have houses there if we didn't have the water treatment plant. So, as I noted earlier, Charlotte helped to designate lands for both future urban development and to protect the key farmlands as urban reserves. So, I really appreciate how you represent public service to our community and our state, Charlotte. And I will say to recognize this, the city has arranged to dedicate, in your honor, a Willamette River viewing bench at Arrowhead Park located near the water treatment facility. And the bench is located at a new overlook that was built during the seismic resilience project this year at the water treatment plant. The site was specifically selected since it overlooks the Willamette and is located in a nice grove of trees. We thought that was a great place to place the plaque at this little plaza that was built there. The plaque reads, "In honor of over 30 years of devoted service to the Wilsonville community, this bench is dedicated to Charlotte Leehan, former counselor, mayor, and county commissioner." So, before I move on, you'll see this plaque soon, and I have a plaque for Counselor West, and I'd like to ask Counselor Leehan to say some comments.
Well, mine are really brief. Remember, I said I was, I had few words, but I just want to say that I want to thank the city and the citizens of Wilsonville for the opportunities that I have had to participate in building this truly remarkable city. And of course, as has been said, also to thank my family for putting up with all of these activities, which got in the way of a lot of other things, and putting up with the various elections, which are, you know, not that fun. I have had, I have played a major role in a few- I have had, I have played a major role in a few things that the mayor mentioned and a minor role in many things. And most of it, but certainly not all of it, but most of it has been fun and also inspiring. I could say way more fun than at the county. A city is, I always say that a city is never finished, so the opportunities continue for improvement. And with that, we invite more citizen participation, more staff participation in this process going forward. As for me personally, I look forward to continuing my deep dive into local history, including how Wilsonville's history is similar and how it is quite different from some of our neighboring cities. But I won't give you, give that away because there's this lecture series coming up, you know? Wilsonville has been my home for many generations, and I will always find ways to be engaged in some manner or another. This council, as I said, has been a very good one to work with. They are all very intelligent and committed to the work. My only regret right now, stepping away from this council, is not having the opportunity to work with the new incoming city council, which I have to say, I think has the greatest potential of any council I have served with since I first came on in 1991. Because when I came on, I knew from nothing, and the new council, when they are seated, will be, there is not a neophyte amongst them. They are, the remaining ones and the new ones coming on have far more knowledge and experience in urban issues and urban management than I ever did. They are all professionals and they all have the city's best interests at heart. So I look forward to this being a great time going forward for Wilsonville. And let's see. And now I've run out of things to say because I'm thinking about those cupcakes.
All right.
So, thank you again.
Well, thank you, Councilor Lehan, and I know we want to get to the cupcakes, but I do want to give the councillors a chance to comment, and I'll start with Council President Ackerball.
Thank you. I just, I want to express my thanks, my deep gratitude. We have sat next to each other for six years, twice a month, for a couple hours each meeting, so you feel like you get to know somebody over that, that period of time. And I think you probably all saw the Boones Ferry Messenger issue. When I was reading it in the center on page five, good job, Bill, by the way, on the issue here, but, you know, he pulled out the council comments from 1991 when Council Lehan was first elected, and in the final paragraph, I have to quote it, because when I read it, I actually, I felt chills. It was, the line is, "The decisions," this is what Council Lehan wrote in 1991, "The decisions we make may benefit us now, but it's the legacy we leave for those who follow that is most important. And I look forward to making a positive contribution toward that future." And the reason that it was so impactful to me is because she has done exactly that. It's a great, it's a great quote, first of all, but she's actually lived it too, over a couple decades. So, you know, I just have such appreciation for all of the work that you've done. You know, I think it's one thing to, to gain attention over time, and it's another thing to gain respect. And you've heard already from, from comments on council, how much respect you have from, from other members on this council, so.
Thank you.
Deep appreciation.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Lindell. Well...
I never sat next to you.
No. Not, not very many, I hear you, I hear you periodically talking about how old you are and how you've been around for a long time and whatever. Few people really know. I'm older than you are.
I know that.
But I didn't start my career in this work in 1991, and you were probably barely in your 40s, I mean, early, way early. What a thing for, for someone of that age to take, take this kind of a career on. And the footprint that you've left, we were in Wilsonville in 1991, when you came on, we were about population of 7,600 people. 20,000 more now than that time. And your footprint and your touch is all over this city. And I think the thing, beyond being just amazed every time from the perspective from which you speak, is that your knowledge of this community is something that we can't replace. We can't even get to that point. And so, from my perspective, I'm going to miss that. Don't be surprised when I call you, yeah, and say, hey, Charlotte, what do you think about this? I have, it's been just an honor to work with you and to get to know you. I love to talk about your chickens, and I know you'll have a little bit of time now to do other things. I'm delighted that you were willing to take on the Willamette Falls Locks Authority. It's a big job. And I just, I think our community is going to miss having your, the depth of knowledge that you bring to this council. And it's, it's a big hole and we can't fill it. But we wish you the very, very best and a little extra time. So, thank you. Councilor West.
In 1991, I was a seventh grader. And now I live in a home in a neighborhood that wouldn't exist without your advocacy. Three of us here do. And so, you, and that quote says it beautifully, is that you sowed seeds that have now benefited multiple generations of people that lived in the county or Wilsonville or probably even in the region. And your family, like you, have shared, and it's such an amazing story, has been here for so many generations, that you just continue to carry a legacy on from your forefathers that continue to make this such a wonderful place to live, and so I appreciate that, I appreciate you. It really has been an honor to learn from you, to serve with you, and Wilsonville's lucky to have you be their advocate and to serve them publicly, and I'm sure that we're going to continue to see you do great things going forward. So, thank you for your service and it's been an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, I would like to ask Councilor West and Councilor Lehan to come to the podium.
Do you want to do the video first?
Oh, you want to do the video first? Okay, video first. Charlotte, 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 I'm going to say one more thing. If we ever get that five-story building downtown that looks out over the river, I'm going to advocate to get your bench moved up there.
On the roof.
Yeah, with a rooftop garden.
Over here?
Uh, sure.
What are we doing?
Now, what's it?
Over here, Mayor?
Yeah. Take this out of the plastic.
Ben first and then what?
All right, so.
Yeah. We're supposed to be both?
What are we doing? Okay. Just the two of you?
Sure, whatever you say. Just go shoot for it.
I mean, you've got the blunt.
One, two, three.
You want to grab, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
We'll compare later.
Yeah.
One with all three.
Okay. So this one. Let's get it in front of us.
One, two, three.
Get everybody. Get one with all three. Let's get the whole council.
One more smile for me.
Yeah, and then we'll get the whole council.
Sorry.
And then one, one with all councils.
Yeah, let's get one with all five.
All the councils. All right. All right, let's now recess and enjoy reception. on the proposed transit-oriented development project at the Wilsonville Transit Center. And the council has discussed this numerous times over the last year or more, and I would now like our city attorney to give us a brief recap, and also, if you could, state a motion that's a relatively technical motion for this particular thing. So that's why we'd appreciate you doing that for us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Amanda Guile Hinman, city attorney. So, the city engaged in a two-phase competitive selection process for the transit-oriented development project, wherein the city first published a request for qualifications, and those qualified respondents then had the opportunity to respond to a more specific request for proposals. Pursuant to ORS 221.729, staff seeks council approval of one of the proposers as the successful proposer for this transit-oriented development project. So the motion would be, I move that council approve developer as the successful proposer for the transit-oriented development project. And I'm happy to repeat that, too.
Thank you. So I would, I would like to ask for a motion to that effect and stating the, the developer, well, fill in the motion, basically, so.
Your honor, I move, help me, to approve the palindrome.
As the successful proposal?
As the successful proposal for, for the transit-oriented development plan, project.
You got it.
That was, I thought I hadn't done that before.
Do we have, do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. The motion's been moved and seconded, and this is a time for discussion. I would like to, I'll make a comment here and, and say that we've discussed this and studied it for, I think, well over a year, looking at ways to take the best advantage of funding that would enable construction of a really, the best type of housing that we could come up with. We've, we've talked about a lot of different models here, to be built at the, near the west station, and it's a category of housing called transit-oriented development, as we've discussed it, gives people, and it's, it's for low-income housing. It's for people who are making no more than 60% of the average, the area median income. And the idea is, is that as part of our equitable strategic housing plan that the council adopted in 2020 to address the gaps in our housing and find ways for people to live in Wilsonville, work in Wilsonville, and be able to commute to jobs and have great places to live. This particular development that we're looking at would have about, I believe, 121 units, rental units, and they are subsidized in, through these various financing mechanisms that, that we have studied and identified with this developer is the best way to go. And we'll have lots more chance to develop, to work on this, but we have identified, in this motion, the developer that we thought would do the best. It includes, it would make use of 1.9 million in funding that Representative Courtney Neron secured in the last legislative session, and on that ground floor, the plan that we are looking at includes having a, some, some very attractive, some options that are really attractive and fun for the whole community, for people who would be riding their bikes, getting on the west, going to Portland, going to Beaverton, people who may be going to the west station and heading off on a bus to a different location to the south, various things like that. This particular developer has a focus on bicycle commuting, so there are storage of bicycles, there, the concept is possibly to have a bike repair shop, so it's got a kind of a commuting bike focus. Also has parking, of course, it aligns the parking with the TriMet parking lot. There's a financial arrangement there so that the residents can make use of that. There's also a plan for a gathering place on the lower floor in this, the main floor that I described, that would be, sounds very appealing to the community based on the other projects this developer has done, including a coffee house, a tap house, they've done these in many other locations, and I think, to me, and I think I heard other councillors say that it really attracted the use of everybody, so this is really a great example of integrating a cost of housing that is affordable to people who could not afford other housing, and it's a very nice, appealing, well-managed building. And of course, they have access to all of that transit as well. So that, I probably went on too long there, but that's the general description of that, and this motion is just allowing us to continue into quite a bit more work on the details. Any other comments? Councilor Lindell.
Thank you. I wanted to thank all of the developers that submitted proposals, RFPs, for this project. I believe that the developers selected in this motion best meets the vision of what was laid out in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan as well as some of our discussions.
Thank you, and I'm glad you mentioned that about the other applications, because they really had a lot of great concepts in them as well. Councilor West.
Gosh, it's kind of surreal. I had the honor of chairing the Equitable Housing Task Force here in Wilsonville, and then on my last meeting, we get to make a meaningful motion to advance that vision forward that happened just a couple years ago, and so many of us have been involved in that, this whole process, everybody worked collaboratively, so...
So I'm really excited by this. I think it's in the right space in the city. I think it's strategically positioned. And I was really impressed with the overall vision, innovation, and creativity of who we, of Palindrom, who we ultimately selected. So I'm excited to see how this moves forward. And I know that the future council, starting next year, has their work cut out for them. But it's a really exciting time for our city.
Thank you. Council President Akerval?
Yes, thank you. I agree, this is exciting. It is an exciting project. And I appreciated, you know, Palindrom's proposal to really draw others to the TOD, or that area within our city. You know, we've talked many times on council how very proud we are of SMART. So it seems exciting that we will get to share this area and the services that are provided by SMART with a wider audience through this as well. I do look forward to having further information on the culturally-specific partner that will be identified for this project as I think that is an important piece. So, exciting things to come.
Thanks for bringing that up as well. Councillor Leahan?
I really don't have anything to add. I think everything has been said, you know, as was said, there were three projects that each had different aspects that were excellent. But Palindrom seemed to meet our needs better than, better than the others.
Thank you. And being the originator of Tree City USA, you just reminded me, Councillor Leahan, that we did want to make note that the way that trees are planted and incorporated in that area as the developer, we just make note of that, is really important. Anything else? One more comment?
I think as we move forward to this, one of the key things that I think needs to be discussed with the developer is the need for our SMART and Wilsonville sharing to have rent-free space in that building for the life of their needs.
Thank you for bringing that up. So reinforcing the importance of rent-free, long-term, if not indefinite, space for Wilsonville community sharing to be located in that building as well as a transit center for SMART, which really is a way for people to, they would learn about all of the transit options in the area, not just SMART. And then, of course, as I mentioned, the social gathering place that has shown success in other places. Anything else that we wanted to reinforce? Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, I will call for the vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, abstentions? Motion passes, 5-0. So we'll now move to the, this is still under Mayor's business. We are doing another round of appointments to the boards and commissions. And been a lot of people to talk to. We have such great interest in these positions. I always try to explain to each person that there are a lot of people interested each time. So I often have people on a waiting list. And after a year, we ask people if they want to still be considered. Please reapply because we always look at appointments that are 12 months and newer. And so we're really lucky to have the level of interest that we do. And I would like to ask Council President Akerval to lead the motions. And this follows, we did appoint several people at our December 5 meeting, and this is the second batch of them. And I do have a couple of more to make coming up. So it's not over yet.
Well, it's great that we have such involvement because these lists are long.
Right.
Nice that we can break it up a little. First one, I move to ratify the appointment of Megan Chenard and Justin Brown to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023.
Second? The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Erica Pham and Luis Gonzalez to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2025.
Second? Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Carla Brishier to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2025.
All second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of George Luoh and Asha Patel to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023.
All second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Amanda Eyre to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2026.
Second? Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. And now for our last one.
I move to ratify the appointment of Catherine Neal to the Planning Commission for a term beginning January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023.
Second? The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion passes 5-0. And to conclude the Mayor's business, which is the longest one in history now tonight, I would like to note that the next meeting of the city council is Thursday, January 4, at 7:00 PM 2020 here in City Hall. We'll now move to the communications section of our agenda, and we will hear from Dan Carlson in our Building Department.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Dan Carlson. I serve as the city's building official. It's great to be here tonight. Wanted to share with you a project that we've been working on. It's one that has its origins from Councillor Leahan and some recommendations that we heard loud and clear in a previous couple of council meetings, having to do with how can we preserve these structures that are being demolished in the form of photos? And so what we've done is we've taken a swing at a project that really utilizes some technology that we have in place. And it is the beginnings of a project that we hope will be something to honor you and your legacy, but also to really capture some of these really, really neat buildings that we have, that sometimes do get demolished to make way for other structures, but to hopefully preserve the memory of those in some form or fashion. So what we've done is, just wanted to share with you, to start out here, that we had heard this, about this idea some time ago, and really wanted to, the first thing we had to do in order to have a requirement was to have code. We had to write code. And you may recall back in 2019, we had a massive code change from our building code. And part of that building code change was to introduce some language to actually add some provisions for capturing photos for demolition permits. And so we did that, became effective January 1 of 2020. And then what we did is, so basically what this does is it requires that any person who obtains demolition permit to demolish a structure has to submit photos to the Building Department along with their permit application. And so then what we did is we went forward and we created a policy. And I know you can't read this because way too many words. But in, part of this policy is we highlight in detail what is needed for those photos to give a little bit more specificity for developers. So we're requiring at least a minimum of six digital photos of a certain resolution. This resolution comes from our IT department and their recommendations. And then we're asking for, you know, some photos that represent different context. And so you can see some of the context that's there. The other thing that we do is we're really trying to provide some direction for staff as we get in these applications in. We want them to actually look at the photos and make sure that, you know, they're representative of the structure. You can tell what they are. They're not taken like at night, or behind a bush, or, you know, having key pictures missing. I've seen that before. And then what we have is we have a staff person who looks at these photos, creates a PDF, and uploads those into our document management system called Laserfish. And so once those are uploaded, then what happens is we're able to take and post those onto this really cool map that we created. Huge props to our IT department, particularly Andy Stone, Beth Wolf, and Dan Stark for their work on this. They were just wonderful to collaborate with on this project. So I'm gonna back out of here, but what you can see is you see a bunch of blue buttons. You can see the city boundaries, and then you can see the urban growth boundary. So the idea is that anything that we have that comes in for a permit application, we may have permit applications for demolition permits, like we do now, for parcels who are not quite in the city. They haven't been annexed yet. So we want to capture those before they get annexed. So I'm gonna stop share right now, and I'm gonna go and look at the actual website and show you this. Hopefully this works. I'm doing this live on the fly, just to show you a couple of dots because I know that we're short on time. But you may recall the infamous Red Barn. I mean, I remember this Red Barn driving up and down the freeway as a kid, you know, with my parents.
Wondering why it hadn't fallen down yet.
So just the green moss on the top of the, you know, the roof of the barn. It's just so iconic, you know? So I'm trying honestly to click on this, and it's not coming up. So.
It's not just the buildup.
I should know better than to do this on the fly. But it did work before this. So I promise it does work. I'm just sharing screen and trying to do it through the screen share. So to give you a couple of examples, up here, we have the Ellingson property with the barn and a lot of photos for that. We got some great pictures of that. We do have the Red Barn before it was demolished to make way for Marion's Carpet. We also have, you may recall, the Quality Inn that was demolished before we built the Hilton. We have photos of that. I personally took those photos because they were so interesting. And quite a few more. We've got some coming onboard in Frog Pond. We've also got an old school here that's in the urban growth boundary that we've managed to capture some photos of that as well. So again, I just, I really want to thank IT for this, their help and their support. Megan Munsterman on my staff is the building staff responsible for creating the PDF and consolidating the photos into something that IT can take and really use. So with that, I'm just really excited to share this with you and hope that you're, that you're happy about it. And we certainly welcome feedback. You know, this is just beginning, so.
Councillor Leahan?
Yeah, I'm really excited about this. I think going forward, this will be, you know, a great resource. I don't know how many cities have something like this. I have thought different times about finding someone even older than me who's lived here a long time to just drive down Wilsonville Road and record, you know, what they remember used to be there. You know, that there was a service station here, and there was another service station here, and then there were three houses right along there. And, you know, that kind of thing because it's all gone. And, or it's changed two or three times over. But having this, you know, going forward is, I think is a tremendous resource for historical reasons, but just as a resource for people to see what was there.
Excellent.
So that's a great job, great job.
Thank you, Councillor Leahan, and thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
That's great.
Look forward to seeing more of those. And I always thought it would take time to take more watercolor classes and paint that barn, but I'll have to use your photo as my model. So thank you, Dan. And that brings us to our Citizens Input and Community Announcements section of our agenda. And we do have one speaker, and I will read the statement that this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items not on the agenda. It's also a time to address the council on items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And I have a speaker card from Kevin O'Malley, if you'd like to come forward. Either one, oh, no, she says the podium.
Mayor Fitzgerald, city councillors, good evening. My name's Kevin Varashy O'Malley. I'm the CEO of the Wilsonville Area Chamber of Commerce. I am here on behalf of our Wilsonville Chamber of Commerce Board, our directors, to extend our appreciation for and recognition of both Councillor Leahan and Councillor West. Earlier, there was quite a lot of very important recognition for Councillor Leahan and Councillor West. Your Wilsonville Chamber of Commerce would like to add our very big thank you. If you visit our website, you'll see stated plainly in bold letters our vision statement, "To create and promote economic prosperity for businesses and citizens in the South Metro Region." Economic prosperity does not happen by accident. It happened because of your leadership as two dedicated elected officials who worked together with staff, citizens, and community leaders to make Wilsonville the special place it is. Councillor Leahan, Councillor West, while tonight may be your last city Wilsonville council meeting, your legacy of distinguished service is manifested throughout our city and will live on. On behalf of all our Wilsonville businesses and the 20,000 people who have jobs here in our city, we have a simple but very profound bravo. Thank you for your dedicated public service. You have made an important and invaluable difference to the economic prosperity of our citizens. Godspeed and thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And please extend our appreciation to the rest of the board. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. If the city attorney will please read the agenda titles, resolutions.
Resolution number 3009, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the South Metro Area Regional Transit SMART Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. Resolution number 3014, a resolution adopting the canvas of votes of the November 8, 2022, general election. Resolution number 3026, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing South Metro Area Regional Transit SMART to renew, to a renewal of goods and services contract with Optibus, Inc., and minutes of the December 5, 2022, city council meeting.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, yeah, all second.
Has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to continuing business. And if the... Do I want you to read this first? I just want to make sure. Okay, I'm going to start by asking the city attorney to read the ordinance to us.
Ordinance number 870, this is a second reading of ordinance number 870, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan and related comprehensive plan text and map amendments.
I call to order a legislative hearing, City Councils.
Mayor, I think you're reading the wrong script.
Oh, I grabbed the wrong, I called to order, no, this is the.
You should have a second reading script up there.
I was just about there.
Oh.
Okay, yeah.
There shouldn't be a hearing on it.
It isn't a legislative, it is not, it shouldn't say that on the card.
Okay.
It says that.
I thought we had it all done.
No, there was a fake title at the top, so let me start over. I call to order the Wilsonville City Council's second reading on ordinance number 870, as has been read. Does any member of the council have any questions for staff or the city attorney on ordinance number 870?
No.
We've talked about this at great length. So hearing no questions, do I have a motion on ordinance number 870 on second reading?
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance number 870 on second reading.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we enact ordinance number 870 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion or commentary, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. As many are in favor of enacting, enactment of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye, and those opposed will answer no. Those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Counselor Linville.
Aye.
Counselor West.
Aye.
Counselor President O'Carval.
Aye.
Counselor Leehan.
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald. Aye. Motion passes, five zero. So we'll now move to ordinance number 871. If the city attorney will please read it.
This is the second reading of ordinance 87, number 871, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville amending the comprehensive plan text and areas of special concern map to adopt airport-good-neighbor policies and designate the Aurora State Airport and surrounding properties as an area of special concern.
I call to order the Wilsonville City Council's second reading on ordinance number 871, as has been read. Does any member of the council have any questions for staff or the city attorney on ordinance number 871? Hearing no questions. I ask for a motion on ordinance number 871 on second reading.
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance number 871 on second reading.
Do I have a second? Motion's been moved and seconded that we enact ordinance number 871 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. As many of us are in favor of enactment of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye. Those opposed will answer no, and those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the vote, the roll.
Counselor Linville.
Aye.
Counselor West.
Aye.
Counselor President O'Carval.
Aye.
Counselor Leehan.
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye. The motion passes, five zero. We'll now move to our public hearing section of our agenda. Ask the city attorney to read resolution number 3016.
Resolution number 3016, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2022-23.
Thank you. Tonight, we will have a public hearing to consider resolution number 3016. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify. Then I will ask anyone who is on the Zoom meeting who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. For those in the audience, please fill out a speaker card and provide it to the city recorder. For those on Zoom, if you want to provide public testimony remotely during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine on your telephone to notify the city recorder you wish to speak when the time for public testimony is called. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833, and when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Both numbers are shown on the screen. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed, council deliberates, and I will announce the result. We wish to hear from everyone, and the city council is satisfied, and it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed, council deliberates, and I will announce the result. We wish to, public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. The public hearing is now open, and Catherine Smith will provide the staff's presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Catherine Smith, the city's Assistant Finance Director. Before you this evening is a budget supplemental. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Wilsonville Spokesman on December 14. The total budget supplemental is for $244,000. The majority of this is outlined in your council packet, is for either unforeseen price increases and/or equipment needs, including increased vehicle costs for facilities and park maintenance, wastewater treatment plant equipment, and various capital improvement projects, as outlined in your council packet. Included also in the budget supplemental is a request to increase the currently vacant outreach librarian position. The increase from 24 to 40 scheduled hours per week ensures the encumberment is able to dedicate sufficient time to maximizing the outreach of the library services specifically to underserved populations. Additional supporting detail is included in the staff report within your council packet. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Smith? Or Counselor Linville?
I, was the position in our packet?
Yes.
It was?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is item number two.
Oh, yes.
In the executive.
It is, it is, I'm sorry. I was looking for it after the capital improvements, but, thank you.
Do we have anyone who has signed up for public testimony? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Does the, does any counselor need anything clarified? Since we don't have any testimony, I don't see any questions. If, since there are no questions, and I see no further testimony coming on issues that warrant discussion, and no further questions, and everyone, we have had no one come forward to testify, I hereby declare the public hearing closed at 8:46 PM. It is now time for the council to consider resolution 3016. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve resolution number 3016.
All second.
It has been moved and seconded, has been moved by Counselor Leehan and seconded by Counselor West to approve resolution number 3016. I'll ask again if you have any interest or things to discuss regarding this. There are lots of chances to ask. Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote in, on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you. That brings us to city manager's business.
I just would like to echo the sentiments of everyone else, that truly appreciated working with both of you. I think Charlotte, when it comes to the history of Wilsonville, the last 30 years, that your name will enlarge, so. We've already gone through the litany of things you've been involved in, including this building here, I believe you had a hand in, so.
Yeah, that's right. That's right, built this building.
And Ben, I look, I look forward to continuing our conversations, and it's been a joy working with you as well, so I look forward to continue advocating for the project up the road here.
There we go. That's an important one. That's an important one.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Any legal business?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City of Aurora, Joseph Schaefer, Thousand Friends, and Friends of French Prairie previously filed lawsuits against the Oregon Department of Aviation and the Oregon State Aviation Board for violations of the Oregon Administrative Procedures Act. The Marion County Circuit Court dismissed those cases. Each of the parties have filed an appeal of the trial court's decision. Wilsonville is not a party to these lawsuits, but does have the opportunity to file an amicus brief in these appeals. While there is a pending motion to consolidate the appeals, staff will request that council authorize filing an amicus brief in each separate appeal in the event that the cases are not consolidated. As such, staff seeks a motion to authorize the city attorney to file an amicus brief in Oregon Court of Appeals cases numbered A179661, A179649, and A179634.
I didn't write those down. I didn't write them down.
Counselors, as we just heard from our city attorney, we have an opportunity to file an amicus brief on this matter that I will, that we just heard described by our city attorney. I'm not going to relist out all of the numbers and technical descriptions. I would like to ask if I could have a motion to file that brief, please.
Your Honor, I move to file an amicus brief on the three matters that were just described by the city attorney. They were A179 something something, and A17, and some other numbers. Three things she just mentioned.
Thank you.
I said it on the record, so I think.
It's on the record.
As read. Do I have a second to that motion describing, accepting the motion as read?
I'll second the motion.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Meeting is adjourned at 8:50 PM. And by the way, that's just what it says on here, 8:50.